Oh, and I won't be here tomorrow. I'll come in and do the chores to make everything good. I'm taking tomorrow.
Anything? Okay, good. Project record. Project report.
She said she didn't put that on there.
Committee meeting. Okay, very good. Big audits.
Audits, woo hoo!
There we go.
So, I, uh... Talked to Frank's, um, referral from his daughter first before I called Robert Happen Associates, who is the, um, agency basically that contracted the gal Priska to be working on our audits. So, I talked to him first and, um, he didn't have a lot of information and I don't know if he's gonna be able to help us because he is working again now and there might be some conflict of interest. Um, but working with Stephanie and Sarah, um, I had them pull the total amounts that we've paid out to Robert Happen Associates, um, which since February is ninety-five thousand dollars, with another thirty thousand dollars owed. And Priska's telling us that another two to three months to complete these audits. Oh, wow. And obviously, I have a big issue with this. So, I called Robert Happ this morning and talked to, uh, the agent that's overseeing Priska and told her I spoke with Priska and that for the ninety-five thousand dollars, we have absolutely not a single deliverable. We have not one single audit that has been completed or filed. And she said even when you spoke with her, you know, a week and a half ago, she didn't give you anything. And I said, "No, she did not." And, um, this contract that was, um, put in place, again, by Tyra, we are contracted to pay this gal forty hours a week, whether anything's being done or not, and the contract is for five thousand dollars a week.
Oh, my God.
And Tyra extended it in May, okay? Um, so, I didn't want to, without talking to counsel, you know, getting it out to the public, um, immediately halt this. We have a meeting set up for Monday or Tuesday. I needed to talk to, uh, Sarah and Stephanie to see if they were available and talk to Monica. She's on the finance committee with me, um, to be on this call, um, on Monday or Tuesday. And it may even involve having to bring an attorney in to, um, help us negotiate this bill and maybe get some of this back considering we have absolutely nothing completed and we have paid this exorbitant ridiculous amount of money. And she's telling us it's still gonna be another, you know, two to three months and that for additional cleanup on the books, you know, that it would probably be another six months to get everything cleaned up.
It's like, how much?
Because that's what they charge.
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, really, I mean, at this point, everything hinges and comes back down to these audits. It's this, this circular, you know, hell that we're in right now because the town has no money. We can't get any money without the audits being completed. And so, we're looking, you know, in executive session, we can't, you know, obviously can't go into that, but we're looking at funding sources to do some things that will get some money released right away. And then, the funding should start coming in, obviously getting these completed, uh, the audits completed is number one priority because it's gonna open up so much. I'm doing my best, folks, I really am. I am researching, I'm on the phone, um, I'm trying to figure out, trying to find somebody local or at least like from Buffalo or Denver, um, you know, the gal Priska's up in Canada, um, of all places. So, I mean, I know you can work remotely from anywhere now, but, um, I really question her competency and whether she should, I mean, the fact that she can't deliver anything. I mean, there's, there was some stuff that happened at the last meeting, though a lot of you weren't here. Um, as I understand it, she found some adjusting journal entries, uh, one in 2019 for four hundred thousand dollars that, uh, she cannot tell me why it was done at this point, which I don't understand why she can't be explained. Uh, any bookkeeper CPA should be able to look at that entry and, you know, once they dive in, figure it out, either get rid of the journal entry or make another correcting entry. So, there was a four hundred thousand dollar entry made in, um, 2018 and a five hundred thousand dollar entry made in, uh, 2019 that they're kind of claiming is throwing all of these numbers and things off in the books, okay? Um, and the fact that she can't correct it in what started in, in February, you know, so, we're talking six months, you know, to make, uh, a couple of journal entries to get, you know, to figure out what that balance is, that's what I'm questioning. And we're gonna go over all of that on Monday, uh, with Robert Happ. Um, I picked up, Monica and I, uh, picked up a bunch of financial information yesterday, you know, just to get kind of a, the most recent, um, look, snapshot of what's going on in the town's books. And I'm seeing even more issues than previously. All of these bank accounts and stuff that I have do not align with anything on these balance sheets. So, I mean, I've got, you know, uh, I've got a pension fund here from Inbank, but on the balance sheet, it shows a pension fund from Bank of the West. Um, there's certain things that you do in accounting that's, a lot of CPAs and bookkeepers will do is that, you know, you identify the name of your account with the last four digits of the account number. And it's even, that's how it comes on your bank statement. It shows the last four digits of your account number, whatever you're dealing with. None of that matches on the balance sheets. And I just don't know this software enough to be able to get in there. So, that's probably one of the next steps that, that Stephanie and Sarah and I talked about is trying to sit down and dive further into, um, that software and see if we can learn, if I can learn a little bit more to get a better, you know, because looking at this piecemeal, until I see what's in that computer and I see what's in, in that software, my guess, it's still just a big guessing game, um, of what's going on. We also talked about, uh, updating the software. Um, the software that we're currently on is an antiquated software. Um, so, we're looking at some other options like Sage and QuickBooks. Um, and even if we have to get a plugin to do the utility billing, you know, if those two programs can't handle utility billing, billing, we can look at some other software that we could plug in that integrates with one of those new, uh, one of the newer softwares. Um, you know, other than that, I, I don't have a lot more to re- to record. I, I'm just in pretty much total disbelief that it's, it's just bad.
Thank you for taking it on from all of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we're trying to find solutions, we are, please be patient with us. We are trying to address it. Um, there's just, it, it, it's absolutely overwhelming at this point. It is completely overwhelming. And I do still have a full-time job and have to put food on my table too, so, I, I am trying to...
Do you need volunteers for that? I know several people in the room.
And that's what we can talk about for sure, um, at the workshops, you know? Um, you know, I know there was a few other people that were, um, you know, had, uh, financial backgrounds that applied for the seat that I'm sitting in. If any of those people wanted to show, I mean, believe me, I'm all, all ears, uh, you know, what we can do. And I mean, there's certain things too that I wanna do. I mean, this town is hurting for money. There's, you know, things I wanted to address tonight that we could start bringing in for the revenues into the town to try to relieve some of stress, but you need the money to make the money, you know? It's one of those situations. So, um, that's kind of where we're at right now. As soon as I have more information, you know, I'll share it with everybody as, as I get it. Um, I just, I, I still can't really make a whole lot of sense of this, you know, when I'm getting bank accounts with, you know, account numbers that don't match anything and the balances don't match either, you know? I'm looking at the, the June thirtieth closing balances, which doesn't align with anything, or, I'm sorry, the May. Um, and I even looked at the, uh, current reports provided and even the closing balances, um, for some of these checking accounts and loan accounts that I can't really identify on here. And if it might, looks like it might be the match, then the actual balance doesn't match. So, um, it's, it's, it's tough. That's all I can say at this point. I'm working on it.
We appreciate that. We appreciate all the work you guys have been doing.
Thank you.
Trying to fix right.
Thank you.
It's very hard.
You're welcome.
Okay.
What's the agenda now?
Mayor, right, vote. We went over that at last, what brought it back up was at the last meeting and said, uh, about his right to vote. They came up with a section in the ordinance that read the same as the town meeting, uh, with the state numbers. It says, "Mayor has full right to vote on every issue." Has right to vote on every issue, but... I'm trying to make errors right. Down the mayor's, uh, section two oh four, the mayor of the town shall be elected. It's a term, but on D, it gives, it says, "Except as may be required by statute, the mayor shall exercise only such powers as trustee shall specifically prefer upon him or her." And it's, uh, ordinance two oh seven for twenty fourteen. But then, mayor came up with... They came up with an ordinance that's the same as the state law. It gives the mayor full right to vote on everything. But this one, this one section gives us the right to vote, to limit the mayor's power to just vote or to break the tie. And we did take that vote and it was hard to win. But then at the meeting there the other day, we got to, on approving it, it came back up. It said the mayor has the right to vote. So, it needs to be recorded correctly.
Neil, the ordinance two oh seven is, it's not on the books here. Sarah looked it up. So, what ordinance are you referring to? It's not on the books, right, Sarah? Read it.
I showed you on your computer, Bob, where it's at, it's, uh...
I know, I know where it says on the computers, but if you look in the ordinance book, it's not in there.
Well, that's the ordinances that they got posted online.
So, you're saying there isn't a physical copy in the book? So, it needs, it needs to be printed off one, put in the book?
Well, we've had to figure out where they're gonna get it from.
That's our digital copy of the ordinances, isn't it? That's been coming back to replace it?
The thing is, we two read state ordinance two oh seven. But Sarah showed me it was ordinance two fifteen dated nineteen ninety-three. So, which one are we going with?
This one dated twenty fourteen, so I would take it to be the newer one. And even the state ordinances, CRS reads that the mayor will have full right to vote unless the town has an ordinance that gives red right to vote.
I'd read it, but...
Right.
Reading well was in the books, is in German. I know what you're saying and I, and I've read it too. But we're looking for ordinance two oh seven. We don't have it. I don't know where to find it from.
That's, that's our ordinance, it's what we got online.
You're saying it's posted on the town of Agar website as an ordinance?
Yes, I mean, that one also says our town where meetings are ninety AM on Wednesdays.
It's under administration.
None of the rules gel and half the time that you'll hear stuff made up that didn't match. So, I mean, this has been ringing in for a long time.
I just wanna say that whoever was working on that website wasn't an employee from the town. It was actually somebody from the work title that was doing it. And then when they left, Sarah started taking over the website. So, where she got the information she put on, I'm assuming from Tyra, but I don't know, but it wasn't Tyra or any of us. So, what's on the website might be inaccurate, is my point. And it wasn't, as I believe it was Eric Dowling who was doing it for a while.
Yeah, one more expense of, of the, and maintaining an accurate website. Okay. So, what are, what are we doing on this? What are we...
This is in the books online and stated twenty fourteen, the other one stated ninety-three. We voted and we took the mayor's power to vote away from it. I'm asking if that stands?
Can it legally stand that way? Do we have to update an ordinance or does the motion to do that cover it?
It says if we have an ordinance, which we do, then we have the right to vote to limit the mayor's power to vote.
And so, this is a local ordinance or a state ordinance?
The one that's local or the one that I just read on two oh seven, it's a state ordinance and a town ord- uh... It's a state CRS and it's a town ordinance that says the mayor has the right to vote, which was done in ninety-three. And two oh seven came out in twenty fourteen, which gives us the right to give him the power to vote. And that's what we voted on.
That's what we did. And that's binding with the state ordinance? We don't have to update our local ordinance? It's binding?
The state gives us the direction that we could, uh, that he has the right to vote, but if we have a town ordinance that gives us the right, uh... I must explain things wrong, is I... It's stated, "An ordinance will have to be done according to the CRS." This ordinance is done according to the CRS. CRS gives the town the option to have this in here to give us that power.
And then you guys voted on limiting his powers, limited them, it passed, and that should have been entered into the book at that point.
And at the next meeting, it was just, I sound like we didn't vote.
Is that easy?
Good question. Sorry, um, I think we do have to do a resolution or an ordinance to fix it. Then you can vote to change it, but then we have to get an attorney to write up a new ordinance or resolution, and it has to be signed and adopted. And also, Mr. Thorn, just, um, that was a good thing you did bring up, is we never did get the codification done because the board never voted on that, which is something that probably needs to get done, is that codification that we have been trying to bring to the board for over a year, but it just keeps getting tabled. And it hasn't been put back on the agenda, but that would be something probably that we really need to do.
And what all does that entail?
So, basically, we hire a company, they come in, they take all of our ordinances we have, um, update our municipal code books. I mean, we have several books laid around, but I don't know which one is...
Is the most current?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll look at one, look at another, and nothing matches. So, we basically need to hire a company to come in, modify everything, update it. And the board was gonna vote on that a while back, but then Tyra said she was gonna talk to somebody to do it, maybe her three, and...
Never happened.
Which I think you get what you pay for, so it was...
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
The state of Colorado literally has everything for you, like he's saying. State of Colorado for every town in this state, depending on what type of government you have, is all right there on the, the state of Colorado.
But can the, can the town adopt ordinances that are, that differ from the state, though?
To a degree, yes.
It doesn't differ from the state.
But it doesn't, and it's not differing from the state. It literally says in it, if, it's one line. You have the right to limit your mayor, which in this case, he needed to be limited.
Right, okay, so...
And so, you guys voted on it, he was limited, that should have been the end.
So, so then, at that point, then administration should have sent that over to the attorney to finalize it and put it on our...
You don't need an attorney to finalize it. I don't know, everybody keeps wanting to hire somebody else to do the stuff that's already in place for you.
If somebody knew how to write an ordinance legally in office, I guess we would have. Basically, when they would do ordinances, resolutions, whatever the board voted on, whatever resolution they needed, Tyra would listen to two hours previous, returning this for higher. He would draft it up, send it down, bring it to the board, and he made sign. So, you can change that, it just needs to be...
Yeah, I guess, you know, forgive me, 'cause I'm still learning, I'm still learning all this. So, I just don't know, I mean, legally, do we have to have the attorney?
You can just read the ordinance and it'll tell you.
And all we do is take...
The state ordinance says...
And that's what they had done.
And I didn't download the state ordinance. It says the same thing as the fifteen does, with the exception, the state says that if we have an ordinance that allows us to limit the mayor's vote, then we could do that by a majority vote. And I don't know how come a majority vote would have to go to an attorney or how come we have to go over this six times.
Right, when, when according to you and several of people in the room in state, we've done what we needed to do. And it should be finalized as it...
Yes.
I'm good with that, so once someone else has an objection to it, then I, I just don't know enough about it. I don't, you know, I thought my...
I'll get you all three copies of them tomorrow. All right, let's move forward. A vote, a voting. I might want to waste my time.
And then you go to working remotely?
Remotely, too. It was set up during COVID, right, I believe? And now we're out of COVID and we have offices up here. And that's, I just wanted to have people, we pay them to work in the office, they need to be here in the office, and remotely working doesn't really, we don't need them.
So, nobody is working remotely right now?
No, but last week they were.
They were in the office?
Well, not last week, um, not very long ago, they were remotely working because the office, the whole building was closed down for three or four days. And the thing was, whenever you call it, we're working remotely today. And they were answering their phone at home.
I did, I do remember that. Um, and I know that, that phone calls were made to the town and that weren't being answered, um, at that time either. Well, I would just say, you know, I mean, we need to file a motion that, you know, um, working remotely needs to be approved by the board if somebody needs to be doing that, you know? If there's a medical condition or, you know, um... Otherwise, there's no remote working unless it's, you know, it's proved by...
With what?
Unless it's approved by the board.
To work remotely, do we pay the internet for the employees' homes? We don't pay any of that now? So, you just go home and forward the calls to your house?
The south one, I believe.
Of, if they're a home, then it's... I don't see where that's needed, but...
Well, I just, I just motioned that if any remote working is needed, it must be approved by the board before requested.
Okay, I second that, you're right. Then I second.
Your person?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahaus?
Yes.
Ms. Gellman?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Safety aguilar days. We covered that a little while ago, but, uh, the fire department's gonna hang down three branches. Okay. Office employee wages.
I think we need to table that for now with knowing everything that we know.
It wasn't about a raise, I was...
Oh, okay, all right, well, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, no, go ahead, I'm, I'm editing it in the sub now, go ahead, go ahead.
I was, I was drafted, I would draw that one. FMLA documents.
Okay, um, that brings us to Tyra, has, um, the FMLA, um, documentation been provided?
Sorry.
Do we have any documents on her? Do you think, do you know Donald received anything as far as, uh, documents that she has for the FMLA?
Okay, this is hand-filled out. Didn't you say there's supposed to be... Those are not the correct forms here, is it, Burns? I mean, it's supposed to be official documentation from the state, right? That's just a hand-filled out form and that date can be anything.
This isn't FMLA. What would happen is... This isn't FMLA. What would happen is you would get a copy of the FMLA from Tyra, but the state would follow up and send a PDF also, and it would, I don't know, I didn't really read much of it, but it, this, essentially gets taken off 12 weeks.
I just took FMLA not too long ago. I will go through the forms that were given to me by my employer.
It wasn't these?
No.
And so it's, I don't know where she got these, or it's not right numbered, federal form, and it didn't come in the way that the state does it because, and we paid her. And FMLA pays, it's like going and all about unemployment, they pay the wages. So if she was on that, she shouldn't be paying.
But they only pay you what you have already in. So if you have, no, and I'm, I'm didn't, because I didn't mind. They only pay you what you have as far as your sick time, you use your sick time first. So they pay you that. If you run out of sick time and you have been regular time or, you know, vacation, then they go into that. But they do the sick time first. I will bring you the forms tomorrow.
And what they told me was that you have 90% of your pay, and you're probably correct. I didn't ask them about how they'd done that part of it, but her vacation days was under question anyway, because she took eight hours off for the remotely, for a eight day vacation. She took eight hours off of her vacation time, and she had been 64. So the whole thing was messed up.
So then I would just say right now, if anything, I would ask, or if anything, don't release any more payments.
Yeah, and then there's some instructions there, but can we get a copy of that?
Get that back. I'm sorry, Monica, I didn't hear what you said.
I said I'm asking the board or the council not to make any more payments.
Well, I mean, at this point in time, we have not been provided the correct paperwork for the leave, and so I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we need to put her on unpaid administrative leave and then have a hearing.
I thought you said you were going to call it abandonment.
Well, I don't know that we can because, according to Cam.
I'll give you a copy of this.
That it's an appointed position, so I don't think we can.
But she's not administrator anymore. You guys voted.
Yeah, but currently it's still.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
So at this point, I think, do we need to make, do we have to make a motion to do this, to put her on unpaid leave?
We need to talk to an attorney. We need to have an attorney put the document together.
Do you have one in mind?
Where's, search those names, Dory. No, I'll talk to you. What?
I'll be, you have one in mind this one.
I called him to see what he says. He's been kind of advised, and he said this anyway.
Do we have to need to make a motion for this?
I don't know. Do we need to make any motions around this, or?
Well, she's making happy so that you can see the process of what we're supposed to do.
No, I can talk with my HR tomorrow to ask exactly what's, or is it any different because she's appointed?
You need to read this. This will be section two dash three five, removal of town officers. Bottom of the first page and please second page. And if you call Buckner on his way out, he's made remarks about this.
I was going to ask you guys, is that where that came in from?
Yep. After he's blamed me for everything.
You have these shoulders ready.
Vern, you're not the only one that created the hospital work requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I want some sort of grant.
Need to arrest him.
So we just go Sean then, and we go and talk to the attorney?
Yeah. The point of suggestion was, was to put her on administrative leave and do it in 30 day increments, 30, 60, and 90, and in that time, have a lawyer write up what we need for this, to present it to her, because she's, she has to have a hearing on this. You know, and it's, this explains how you have to make the charges, which charges are the problem, and then we have to. She has to be served the charges. Now, by the time the place of the hearing, she'll be served upon the accused at least 15 days before the day of the hearing. And then it tells you the hearing, the decision, the appearance by her counsel, what's going to happen during this, and then it'll come all the way down to the decision, and even after the decision, she has a right to appeal. It's hard to get rid of an appointed official.
But not.
If we do it any other way, then that will be sued, and we'll win. You did it, you did it, that's why. Okay?
Unless you have evidence, which there's loads of, of the malfeasance of, of, of everything, that, that goes, because I used to do those hearings when I was an HR manager, and you have all that, they are not going to rule, you know, against the employer in those cases. You have loads of evidence, you're not going to lose a hearing.
You use the magic word employer, technically not her employer.
Right, but you know, you know what I mean. When they go to the hearing, you're representative. Better to be safe than sorry, though.
We'll, we'll talk to an attorney.
Yeah, yeah.
But what we can do tonight is just put her on leave and give her no access to the building.
Okay, so how do, well, do we have to write something up for that temporary leave?
I believe we, and I could call, I could call the guy in the morning and ask him, but I'm under the impression that we could make a motion for her on leave, and we, we have to serve the papers within 15 days of the hearing. It's the only thing I see as a timeline.
So, I mean, we're a ways away from even having a hearing at this point, so you said we could do temporary leave in increments of 30 days.
It could take us up to 90 days to get this here, but we can't keep her on a leave, an administrative leave until, but.
When you guys take her administrative leave, when you guys remove her remote access to everything, bank accounts, everything, and she's the main provider? Because if you're putting her on administrative leave, she cannot touch nothing up in town.
Good, right, right. We've already started trying to restrict some access. Maybe did you guys talk to?
We have to change locks on the doors.
Yeah, did you guys talk to IT?
Because she even has probably appointed this authority on banks, bank accounts.
Yeah, we, we've discussed that as well. Vern and I were discussing that earlier, and the fact that Donald's not here anymore, and maybe, you know, Gerald and one of the board members having to go, because you're, you're on the bank accounts, correct?
Yes.
So it will come down to Gerald and another board member.
Well, to change the bank accounts, it's going to take a copy of the minutes of the meeting where we both can add someone or take them off. That's the only way the bank would do that. We just went through it, how long does it leave you?
Very well. Okay, so who's, are you going to make a motion for her administrative leave then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have her on administrative leave.
I'm sorry?
I'd make a motion to put her on administrative leave.
With or without pay?
I would say without.
I'll second it. 30 days, have we seen 30 days?
There were, yeah, 30 days was the first. Yeah, we did 30 days, 30, 60, and 90.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahaus?
Yes.
Ms. Gellner?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Can I ask a question first? Does she get to use all her sick leave and education before we cut the funds off?
And that was going to be an issue because, well, she's, she gets, you, we definitely have to pay her for her vacation. And if it's a sick leave like that, how many sick days do you, does she get?
Right now, she doesn't have any sick time left, and I think she had roughly three weeks of vacation left. So I've already paid her the last two periods on sick leave and some vacation. Sick leave is gone, and now she's just got about a little over three weeks of vacation leave.
Whenever we got into this deal about figuring the vacation time, and I don't know how you guys want to do it, just come up a couple of times. We gave her eight days vacation. She claimed she has worked remotely and only took eight hours off.
She didn't use any of it at all for that eight. That was a mistake number one on the paperwork, but then she did take work from home for the eight days. She submitted a timesheet showing she worked remotely from home with SGM, Kim, them doing stuff on the augmentation part, so she didn't use any of her vacation for that incident we're talking about.
I don't believe that.
Augmentation part that doesn't work?
Well, Ken did say that he did, he, he was talking to her, he was working with her. He did say that in the meeting.
She said to him that she was on vacation to prepare the agenda, which is it? She sent me about and Frank over to the attorney because she couldn't do the, the.
Agenda.
Agenda in time because she was on vacation.
You have the video?
I, I remember that. I saw it, but I'm just saying, Ken did say that he was working with her.
Okay, safety wise, to make sure there's no trouble on this. She started with 169 hours, and she herself said she took one day. It leaves her 161 hours.
I saw your video. I mean, I, I do, I agree with you there. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that. Okay, anyhow, I saw the video. I, I do agree with that, you know, I did hear what she said. You know, how do you expect me to get that done when I just got back from vacation? So I did say that. But I'm just saying, you know, Ken did say that he has been talking to her on the phone during one of, but it's been, what, two, three, maybe three meetings ago?
She's been gaming the system for so long that she could have a meeting in her house for five minutes, and she could, well, bill that for a whole day.
Well, I can answer.
And, and since all these questions are coming up, she did say she took eight hours. So leave her with 161 hours and just give it to her.
Well, if she's using the phone, well, phone records, you could tell who, you know, if she was doing any kind of, any kind of.
And for her.
So you can vote to put her on unpaid leave to investigate.
Hurt the hours because this came up.
They could vote to pay her on unpaid leave to investigate your per hours and all that stuff. We're, correction, they, when we did something, they would put us on unpaid leave to see if it was true, and if they found out that we did nothing wrong, then they had to back pay us. But if you were found guilty, then there was a whole different ballgame.
Yep.
I vote yes.
I didn't see that in this because the elected official is what gets us. That's how come there's a page and a half here for us to go to the attorney with. And I'm sure they're pretty well close, but there are different forces doing this.
Mr. Thorn? Your vote?
What do I vote? Do you vote?
On the motions. On your motions.
For administrative leave, you.
Yeah, we already went through that, and so, okay, so now we're down to recycling.
Uh, we're down to audits, financials.
We already went through that.
Available funds. We know they've answered?
Yeah.
It's not just me.
Could it be stated for the public available fund?
She said, can it be stated for the public what the available funds are?
I don't know. You guys know more than I do. Can I state it?
Yes.
Nothing. No, that was as of 6:30. I don't know what's incurred balances, and I don't know what I'm allowed to say because of the executive session, but I'm telling, the town is sure. We're spending, we're spending more than we have, and.
The general fund, you talked about that, that's not executive.
Um, yeah, well, I mean, that's just it. You know, there's, there's funds going into the general fund that shouldn't be in the general fund. That's really all I can say about that, and so that's, you know, where the overspending is happening, where we're spending money that we shouldn't be spending, on things we shouldn't be spending it on. And it's just, there's so much reimbursement and funds that we have coming to us that are all pending these audits. So again, it just goes back to that vicious circle of we have to get these audits done to get the cash flow coming in again from all these different sources that we've, reimbursements and, you know, everything that's owed to us.
We can move on.
Recycling?
Yes, recycling.
Just with those recycle bins.
Oh, oh, I, I ask one question before you guys move on. You had made a comment about Donald is no longer here. Can you clarify that? Is he, is he resigned? Is he done?
I don't think so.
Just for.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because she had made a statement saying that he's, that he's no longer. I just wanted to clarify that.
He had something going on, I think, with his children down in Texas or something. He's out of town.
I remember watching him on the news. He had no financial concerns.
Uh, that's okay. There's, there's a vote coming up, so that situation will be. So what's up, recycling? One last thing, guys.
It's a contract that's going to renew and working 1,094 for about a year.
A year?
And the price is going up, and we're not collecting anything from it. We're getting nothing.
It's their benefit. They get everything out of them.
They're, they're, yeah, they're, and they're telling these for it, and we have.
I mean, I use it. I do, and it actually irritates me that we don't have plastic recycling down here.
There's not one of them, Vince, is plastic?
Nope. I, I use it pretty much weekly. I do.
So what all do they take?
Hands, so tin, tin, aluminum, uh, clear. Hands, volume, so tin, tin, aluminum, uh, clear glass, colored glass.
Newspaper.
And there's newspapers.
You won't put, take cardboard, they won't take plastic.
Is there any other recycling company around this area right now?
I remember recycling in Buffalo, like in the level.
Yeah, there is.
No, I called for his house. They don't.
Not that to pick up. I mean, but I take my plastic. That's why I take my plastic.
Yeah, just that they don't offer any of the. Pobita has a cardboard recycling program that they have a place up there.
Can you maybe just look into that a little bit more? Are they, do they want us to sign a contract like immediately, like is there any kind of thing or?
I don't think so. I think we have time to sign it.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you maybe just look into that or maybe I can, you know, take a look to you and see if there's any other options? Yeah, it's irritating, you know. I'm just taking my plastic. Oh, your plastic? Yeah, I've done my teeth, but I feel weird going into Walmart, like smuggling in plastic to dump in the bin, you know? I feel like I'm doing something wrong. Yeah. I, I've done it before, but just like little amounts, you know, and I tried not to buy any of my plastic, and I, I get so weird about.
Do you want to table this one?
Uh, yeah, how is it? Just able it, let us look into it a little bit more. It's obviously not the most pertinent thing on the agenda. I'm ready to call it. I might burn it up.
I think we're going with it. Correspondents then. Who will look the bills?
Are you no month?
Nobody can get paid.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion that the council actually is consulted on the bills before they're paid. I agree with that.
I second that. We second that.
You want either the council or the committee?
Well, I just, I think, you know, how many, how often do you guys do bill runs, you know, check runs?
Um, I do it probably at least every other week.
Every other week? So, you know, I would say either Monica or I.
Most, most towns do it by the council. The town actually, the schedule, their payment says you got contracted or you're here. You're telling, well, it's gotta go through a board for approval before it gets given to you.
Right, right.
And then you're gonna end up with bills that are recurring, like the gas, water, things like that that you could, you know, frequent. There's some of them you could just.
Yeah, I can see how we could get that done, so let's, we've voted on it.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Brahaus?
Yes.
Ms. Gellner?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Thorne?
Yes.
It did, it did a lot.
Maybe one on the table, one on the chair.
I want you to chair.
Right, second.
One time, one time. Okay. Yeah, it's like they straight up, we'll go, we'll start checking about your terms or something. Right, so it's like they signed up for this sort of subscription or maybe. So there were several things on that. There's so much.
Recording stopped.
Right. I know. I could have been written yesterday. Well, you're saying that. That's it, would have been done. And that's, they can produce it, and that's what I thought was gonna happen, is that we're gonna try to backdate something.
Replace all.
Okay. So hot, can I switch? I'll, I'll actually just call you guys tomorrow about the meeting on Monday with Robert have. You just, I'll call you. I'm actually going down the.